I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 3rd, 7:00 PM. And we do have a full board, but I'll ask each member in the town administrator to introduce themselves.
Good evening. Richard Bremmels.
Andrew Allard.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Great. And if everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. New business. So Chief Coop and Stephen Lacava, can both come up to the table, please? Good evening, Chief Coop.
So pursuant to the new agreements and rules in place, I'm presenting Stephen Lacava tonight for appointment to a full-time position. He recently graduated from the Bridge Academy. It's been a long road. Steve's got Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. He's got a lengthy career at St. Vincent after graduating from a previous Reserve Academy. He's been with us since 2018. He's done good work. He's already had a working knowledge even before that coming from St. Vincent. A little bit different of a response system there. They had police officers. They had no firearms there. So you got to use your brain a lot more. And I often tell them that, you know, it makes them better. And, you know, he came over here and he did some solid work for us over the years. He was originally gonna, he was originally gonna go to an academy. A reckless driver stopped his opportunity to do that a few years ago. And he remained loyal to us and waited for the Bridge Academy. And now here we are getting him going, hopefully on a full-time position.
Stephen, anything from you? Or do you want us to just jump in and ask you a bunch of questions?
Um, no, nothing, nothing really more to say. He pretty much got it. I had nine years at St. Vincent Hospital. I was a sergeant for six of them. Came to Millville in 2018 part-time. And I worked Douglas part-time as well, but always have been Millville first. And I look forward to a long career here.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Whereabouts are you commuting from? Are you local?
Millbury.
Millbury? Okay. It's not too far.
No, 15 minutes.
Yeah, right down 146.
Sure.
I guess so. One of the things that really jumped out in the letter that you sent that I really liked is you mentioned during your time at St. Vincent Hospital dealing with a variety of issues such as mental health, homelessness, and many different personalities. And I think that because police aren't the first line of response in so many different kinds of things, because they're just, people see something, it's an emergency. It may not be like, as you said, Chief Coop, need a gun, but they don't know who else to call. So I liked that experience in particular, that you've dealt with people who have had, you know, other kinds of issues where you have to be creative in how you manage it. So, and having nine years of that experience, I find very beneficial. And I was, I don't know what you can share with us around that, because I know some of it might be confidential. But is there anything in particular there that you would like to expand on regarding that point?
Uh, not really. We dealt with a lot of mental health. We had a behavioral unit, but it was a lot of de-escalation, a lot of, you know, verbal judo, you know, all that. And it definitely, it's definitely helped.
Yeah.
Definitely helped.
No, I appreciate that as well. And Chief Coop has mentioned a few incidents that we've had in town where I know he's managed to de-escalate rather than move in a different direction.
I mean, it's, it's what the state and the governing bodies really want now. It's almost come to the point where they're actually tying our hands, you know. They want less arrests. They want, they just want the police doing...
Different customer service.
Less, you know, they, um, so it's a difficult time. What I meant, though, with St. Vincent is it's a pretty violent place up there. It's nothing for a car to roll up over there and roll out a shooting victim or a stabbing victim. And so I just think you get a better education if you're a police officer over there working with less tools. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just, I appreciate this letter. And I just want to say for the board that, you know, I've had many interactions with the chief, and he's often mentioned Officer Lacava. So the other thing is, I think, and he's mentioned you in a good way all the time.
Absolutely.
And your family should be very proud. Here's the, you know, the Bridge Academy really is actually working. This post aspect to it for Millville in this particular situation is a success story to see you go from part-time officer, go through the bridge, and now be here ready to be hopefully appointed as a full-time police officer for Millville. I think that's great. So.
I would agree. I'll call this one a success.
Yeah.
Not everyone necessarily is, right?
Not everyone, but.
Yeah. No, I agree. I think we want to promote from within. And I really like that because I think when people show dedication and the ability to grow, you want to reward that. It's not like in hiring from outside versus within, I always question that. Having been overlooked for positions myself for someone outside versus within, so I'm happy to see this path as well. If there's nothing else, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Stephen Lacava as full-time police officer through June 30th, 2023.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Andrew. And thank you, Rich, Richard, sorry.
Close enough.
Yeah, I know. I always use full names. Um, any further discussion? Saying none, I will call for the vote. Richard?
Last chance to run away.
I'll stick.
Aye.
Aye. And Jennifer is aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Like I said, your family should be proud.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's great. Good choice, chief. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night, Jennifer.
Thanks for coming.
Wow, we have such a huge audience remaining. All right. So the next order of business is the Selectman Meeting Calendar. So this looks reasonable to me, Peter. Is there anything we need to do with it?
No, I think if you just wanted to approve it, that would be great. It's always subject to, you could change meeting dates as you've done.
Yeah.
But this is reflecting this year's calendar, similar to last year's calendar.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, adjusting Mondays to Tuesdays when there's holidays, like tonight.
Yep. Okay.
And this would be posted on the website.
All right. Sounds good. So looking for a motion to approve the calendar?
Make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's meeting calendar for 2023 as presented.
Seconded.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right. It'll be posted on the website. So I guess just to give a spoiler alert, I'll let everyone know that the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 23rd. So we moved it a week because of the holiday again. So we're gonna have two Tuesday meetings this way. It's one Tuesday, one Monday. Okay. So town election calendar and open positions. Peter?
Well, so this, in your packet, you have, um, a form presented, prepared by the town clerk outlining the annual town election calendar. So first day to obtain nomination papers is today. So starting now. Last day to submit nomination papers to the Board of Registars for Certification is February 13th by 5:00 PM. So, and you need to get 20 certified signatures on those nomination papers. And she goes on to, last day to object or withdraw is March 1st. Last day to register to vote in the town election is March 24th. The deadline for vote by mail in the town election is March 20, I'm sorry, last day to register, March 24th. Deadline for vote by mail is March 27th. The annual town election is April 3rd. This form will be posted on the website. Talks about campaign finance reports if you're applicable and you're running. So some things to pay attention there in terms of what one must report and when, by when. And the annual town meeting calendar dates are also included there. The town meeting, annual town meeting is May 8th. And the last day to register to vote for that is April 28th. Deadline for the warrant for the Board of Selectmen to be posted is April 24th. So we have good dates there. She also provided, I had included in the packet until she prepared, and it's now been added to your packets, the elected open, uh, positions open for the April 3rd election. Okay. So Blackstone, Millville Regional School Committee has three elections, positions open. There are some folks who, one's Tara Larkin. She's, her term's expiring. The other two, Ted Novio and Aaron Zimmerman, as you recall, you appointed until the next election. So their positions will expire. All three of those are four-year terms. The Board of Health, Dustin Cicorelli's term is ending, and that's a three-year election cycle on that one. Board of Selectmen, there will be four opportunities to vote for three-year terms, two of which are expirations of Chair Gill and Vice Chair Allard. And so, and then there's two vacancies. So to the extent folks run, there's opportunity for, there. Highway Department, Brian's term ends April as well. We have a Library Trustee, Pamela Thistle. Her term ends April 20, April 3rd, '23. Planning Board, we have appointed until election is Jason Malley. And he's a member. So that's a five-year term that someone would run for.
Wow. I didn't know it was five years.
Town Moderator is appointed until the election. So again, that expires this April. That's a three-year term. Tree Wardens a three-year term. Veterans Memorial Park has two people whose terms will be expiring, and those are also three-year terms. And I know there was a mailer that went out by the town clerk. It inadvertently did not include the town moderator as a position up for election.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So I guess, so last day to object or withdraw. So I understand what withdraw is. What does object mean?
I don't really know. I guess, uh, yeah, I'll have...
Because I'm planning on pulling papers. I plan on running for another term. And so I was wondering, I wonder if that means someone could object to my signatures or something. Andrew, do you know?
No, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I always, it says you need to have more, cannot be less than 20 and no more than 30. So what I normally do is I fill up my whole paper. So I get, I get as many as I can fit. So just, you know, guided, you know, advice for anyone who's running. That way, in case someone's like, oh, no, I'm a registered voter, and they didn't register. So if you have 20 and then one falls off, then you're down to 19. So I always get, I think it's 33 fit on the sheet, something like that. So just some advice if you're considering running. Okay.
There's no limit here to how many elected positions you can hold?
Um, I, well, I don't think I could be selectman in something else.
So you can have multiple positions because of the size of the town. But if you're like, let's say, on Board of Selectmen, you can't just, or vote on a subject, like if you were a part of another department, like the Council on Aging, you'd have to abstain from all of those votes. But there might be some more nuances depending on the position, too. But generally.
Because of the conflict, right?
Do you have a lot of time, Richard? Would you like to run for multiple positions?
Looking for pain?
I know.
No, I, you know, I just figured I'd throw that out.
Yeah. So I think it depends. Like, I'm appoint, like, I'm the Board of Selectmen representative on Capitol. So there's kind of things like that where you'll hold a couple, where you can hold a couple positions. But I don't know about elected and...
Well, you just never know, because somebody might have another position and then see this and then say, hey, you know, maybe I'd like to do, too. I don't know.
Yeah. So I guess I would have them contact the town clerk, and she'll know for sure.
Right.
Yeah. So that would be my advice. Okay. Anything else on the town election calendar, open positions? Okay. So budget and capital planning update. Peter?
Just a quick update. I did send the budget guidance letter out today to all the department heads. And Tara, the town accountant, will be sending out the, the forms, you know, the Excel spreadsheets for the budget department heads, fill in their budgets for FY '24. The guidance is, as you last read and approved, I just wanted to coincide the timing of the release of that memo with when Tara would be getting out the, the budget spreadsheets. Capital planning, as you know, I'm the chair, at least currently. I think on the, I'm looking to set up an agenda this month here. And one of the agenda items would of course be reorganization. We'll see where that goes. But, you know, we've had the luxury on capital items with the use of ARPA funding and, you know, our CARES Act funding and all that. So we haven't had to dip into the taxpayers' pockets, per se, for a number of items. We'll have some of that capability, I imagine, going forward. But we'll see. And we'll be looking into that. Separately, you've been invited. Dr. DeFalco's trying to set up a joint meeting with the both towns' Selectmen, Finance Committees, and the School Committee on February 13th. So pencil that into your calendar, 7:00 PM at the middle school. Calls it a fiscal '24 joint meeting.
That'll be a Monday.
And that's a Monday night. That's right.
Okay.
In February.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind. And reminders will follow, I'm sure.
Yep. Okay. Sounds good. So nothing, if there's nothing else on new business, I'm going to move over to old business. So lifted luxuries update. So Peter, I think you had an update?
Sure. So I included some reading materials in your packets and some thoughts for you to consider how to, how to go forward at this stage of the game, based on your last meeting with the principals of lifted luxury. And also, new information, one piece of new information, we did get a, what I call a catch-up payment of $40,000 for four quarters' worth of advance, if you will, prepaid impact fees under the host community agreement that otherwise has expired. But you have, one would argue implicitly, have allowed it to have extended it. And so what, in my cover sheet to you all in submitting the packets, I put down three ways you could, could go. And at this stage, given it further thought, I, I think it's wisest to go with the first option, which is to, to continue forward under the existing host community agreement. And to that, I would recommend that you actually do a formal extension this evening through September 30th of '23, which aligns with the timeframe that the principal, you know, of lifted luxury provided the board at the last meeting, when they expect to get Cannabis Control Commission licensing approval. So that, that, that makes sense. And I think that's the best financial road for the town to go, go down. If you take the position as what was suggested in some of the materials I provided, to consider this contract as no, no longer in force. And then you're into either you're negotiating a new contract, which would follow the new rules for host community agreements, which would not allow for impact fees that the current contract currently allows. And the benefit to the town would only be incremental sales tax on the retail sales, not on any of the wholesale sales.
So if we have to renegotiate that into the new, new terms, we'd be losing some revenue?
Yes. Significant. Yep. That does not mean, though, that the revenue, there is scuttlebutt, but nothing definitive. And no one can peg it council and legal reviews and memos from, you know, KP Law and all that sort of stuff. The contracts are ironclad. The terms are clear in the existing contract that that's the deal, and you can't change the deal, right? There's scuttlebutt that some communities, and it could take on a life of its own, where Cannabis Control Commission in some manner, and I don't know what that manner would be, could say that the, the law is now that you have to give back some of that money. I don't know how and under what mechanism that could take place. But there is that exposure. So I think being prudent in that regard, we would not, I would not, in this upcoming budget, for example, I will not project any impact fees as revenue. I would just stick to the, additional sales tax as revenue projections, okay? And any monies would be put into a, just held in escrow for, until the dust shakes out. And maybe by September 30th, more of that dust will shake out and we'll know more. But right now, there's some ambiguity. You also saw a draft of a letter in response to a request for information. And depending on what you decide tonight, I will adapt some of the wording of that, because some of it would need to change from what I've put there, as well as what council has suggested.
Yep.
So I would, you, you know, be sure to reflect where you might go on that.
Okay. So I think, I do think we want to extend it to the 30th. But I think we need to put in, like, these objectives must be met. So would the only objective be the approval, the licensing of the Cannabis Control Commission? That would be, is there anything?
That's a real trigger to every, because then they, the only other piece is to start operating in accordance and commence operations. You could reference that calendar that she provided. Because in that calendar, it talks about Cannabis Control Commission is September 23rd, you know, final walkthrough. Open retail is October 9th. Selling wholesale, October 9th. Manufacturing open. So you could, maybe you just want to refer to that calendar and pick October 15th even, just add two weeks as a cushion. So you could, maybe that's how you want to phrase it, that it's Cannabis Control Final License and Commencement of Operations by October 15th, 2023. Because that's, that's...
Well, because I'm looking at the calendar. It said final inspections with Cannabis Control and approvals. I see that up here, like around May 15th, May 22nd? And then is that something different?
So I, so I don't know what you, yeah, I see that now. And I guess I was only looking at the final walkthrough with CCCC that triggered the 9:30 date. So, so I don't know if that's like, whether the license is granted then, or the license is granted with their final walkthrough. I, I actually don't know that. The final walkthrough may be just, you can't start operating unless they have a walkthrough.
Mm-hmm.
But they've granted you the license. I, I don't know that.
Because I see a final walkthrough into manufacturing and a final walkthrough under retail. So I don't know which is right. And that's September 24th. Is that, well, the final, so retail final walkthrough with Cannabis Control, she's having scheduled to complete between...
Yeah, by October 15th.
Yeah, between August 27th and September 24th, right? And then the purchaser product, open retail is October 15th.
Yep.
Okay. So, I mean, if this is the schedule she provided, I think we'd be able to hold her to it.
Right.
I guess what, what are other thoughts? So we could give her until, because even this is September 24th. So if we did by October 1st, and that gives a one week of cushion.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, it's a day, 9:30, 10:01, I know, whatever. That's six. And that doesn't give her much wiggle room, however. This will be two years past the original agreement date.
Correct.
So we've given her 24 months of wiggle room. So.
Do we have any updates from either the building inspector or anything of that sort?
No. So there's been no activity there. The only activity has been receipt of a check, which I had in my hand today.
Okay.
Okay. And I did, as, as you know, I did receive a term sheet, a signed term sheet with our investor, with substantial investment being made. Okay. But as far as, and I actually asked the, I asked the building inspector to look into this, get up to speed and reach out. But I asked him to hold off until what you do tonight.
Okay.
Do we know what exactly they would, what they would need to do to start building or refinish?
Well, so they're, they're in the, they've done a lot of building already. So the next step where there was a stop work order done in September of '21 by the prior building commissioner. And in that, there were certain things that needed to happen, which was, I think, video of behind walls of wiring and I don't know what else. So that's what Joe would have to get up to speed on, the specifics. The other part of it is that the contractor back then has resurfaced and is ready to begin commencing, continuing the work if and when ready to do so, you know, allowed to do so. Because they've apparently resolved any disputes or differences and past dues, bills and whatnot. So all systems appear to be go from their end. And I, I think you're formalizing by a vote an extension also ensures that we continue to operate under the existing agreement.
Right.
Rather than getting into a new one or getting into other roads that probably are not particularly attractive.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a conversation, we can't have an executive session, unfortunately.
Yep. I think that's okay. So I guess I would want to see, so I do want to vote to extend it, but I want to make sure we get the language right on exactly what the objectives are. So would it be, like, what is it that we're looking for in the Cannabis Control Commission? Is it license or...
Yeah, final license.
Final license.
And commencement of operations of all three parts of their business. And to the extent that they progress through, and let's say they run into a snag in one of the elements, then they would have to come to you for a waiver of, or a further extension or something. But I think they're, by doing this date, and whether it's, you know, October 1st, September 30th, or October 15th, I think those are the three dates to play with here. Those are hard dates. And I think that also gives you the two-year extension, you know, the two-year timeframe.
Yeah. So the final license, is there licensing for cultivation, manufacturing, and retail? Is that why there's these three different walkthroughs?
I, I think so.
Okay. So we'd want to say final licensing for cultivation, manufacturing, retail completed by, say, October 1st?
Yeah.
And then retail, she said on or before Columbus Day. I saw that, right?
Yeah. So maybe here, just to throw it out there, October 5th, I think, was the, the agreement date. So that, you know, that's sort of the anniversary date.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you just want to go with that.
Yeah. And that's a full two-year extension.
So that's really a, yeah, October 5th.
Final licensing, complete, 10/5/23. I guess I'm, I'm just thinking a lot. I'm wondering, can we tell her you need to start selling by this date? If everything is...
Well, that is commencement of the retail operation.
Yeah. But is that part of the licensing, too? You know what I mean? Is those are linked? Okay. So when she gets final licensing complete, then the retail...
She can open the door, assuming they let her, right?
Okay.
I think that's what those walkthroughs are all about.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess I'd be comfortable with, say, final licensing complete by 10/5/2023. And I don't know if we need to give any other stipulation. I think that having one final licensing complete for all three phases should be done by October 5th. And that's a full two-year extension.
Yep. Yep.
And then if it's not completed by then, then I, I think we're done.
And, and I would use final CCC licensing. I would just insert that in there.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So I am comfortable with that, but Andrew and Richard, do you agree with that or not comfortable? I know, Andrew, you were the lone no vote when this person came forward a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah. I mean, frankly, I thought saw it as a bad investment. My opinion hasn't changed on that. And I think it's kind of been proven. I don't think they have sustainability as a business.
Can't disagree, based on where things have landed, but...
So...
But I can tell you, they, so their payments to date, including today's check of 40K, are now up to 70 to the town.
70,000.
That's real money. And the fit-up costs over there are six figures, you know, healthy six figures already with, you know, more to go.
Yeah.
And the, um, the investment is real, real money.
Yeah. So then it would be final licensing needs to complete by 10, 5, 2023. If it's not, then we will be dissolving the agreement. What will we be doing with the agreement? What's the correct terminology to use?
Well, the agreement, uh, has particular wording, which basically says unless extended, it's ended and, and it says shall be renegotiated. And in the renegotiation, your choice could be, you know, pick any avenue you want to go down, walk away, whatever, right?
Okay.
And that's clearly in the current host community agreement, which you're extending.
So you say the final licensing needs to complete by 10, 5, 23. If it has not at that time, the Board of Selectmen will vote to take other steps, including dissolving the agreement.
Well, I, I would, I would limit what you say more to the agreement terms will prevail.
Okay.
Not stating otherwise. And the agreement terms do specify...
The options.
Geez, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Sound good? So I think Andrew's going to vote no, so I think that you don't want to make the vote. So I think Andrew's going, doesn't want to make the motion, which is okay. So I'll make the motion. So I guess, well, let's, so Andrew, if we walk away from this now, you'd rather start from with somebody else?
I mean, at this point, yeah. I don't, to be honest, I don't see this business taking root and being stable.
What if you were to extend this agreement until, you know, right around like final inspections with CCC? And then ask for an update?
Oh, through May 23rd?
Well, let's just say hypothetically, we, we say, okay, you've got until...
But I would do no later. I think you got to put a hard end on it. Right? So let's say, let's say they progress sooner. That's cool. But if you want to go past October 5th, are you see, are you comfortable?
I'm saying earlier, I'm saying earlier.
Yeah, he's saying like, do like, we want to do a check-in on May 5th.
Yeah.
If they've met everything, we'll extend it to...
Yeah.
August 1st, and if they do it, then we extend it to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would, that would put us right around, you know, final inspections with CCC and approvals for, for cultivation.
Mm-hmm.
And we get a, we could get an update and see where they're at. I don't know if that would make you more comfortable.
I don't know how you'd word that.
I'm not trying to pitch it, but I'm, I, I don't know.
Like, but...
Trying to make everyone happy and that might not be possible.
Yeah, I mean, don't...
Yeah, well, I'm not trying to upsell. I, I, I don't, you know...
He is trying to upsell you.
Well, here's the way I would put it for Andrew, just, um, there's the bird in hand, right? And they're under a 3% impact fee payable to the town. The two birds in the bush, you won't get that deal.
Right.
You won't get that deal. So, and this allows for an eight-year life under the rules of 3% impact fees unless they really change the rules. So I, yes, the track record is not very good.
And that's...
But there's been, but there's, there is real money on the table, in the, in the bank. Some need to go in the bank tomorrow, depending on what you do. And there is also exposure if, depend, uh, uh, on a particular action.
So my main thing is, is I like having the hard deadline. We should have kept it to begin with, um, unfortunately, whatever. But the major thing is, is that I don't see this company being stable. And that's what I'm afraid of, if, if they go under after a year or so, then we're back to square one regardless, and we just lost time, basically.
Well, I would say...
So that's where I'm seeing it.
Yeah, I, I, I can't share with you the term sheet that has been signed and agreed upon, and one of the elements was the check that I have in hand, we have in hand, okay? But it would be years before they'd go under with no business, based on the term sheet, years.
Numbers, though.
I know, things can change.
I know.
I get that, yeah.
You know, how people present them, their numbers and all that can...
But again, it's a bird in the hand with the information we know versus if you ever get another bird, you're still dealing with unknowns of that bird. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we have an opportunity to kind of continue collecting cash, not right, real revenue.
Yes.
Uh, or terminate it and, and, and get nothing and then try to...
Start again.
Start again.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not in favor of starting again right now. I, I'd say let's, let's adhere to their calendar if they're going to, you know, if they're going to be somewhere around having final inspections in May, circle back in May, let's take their money now and see where they're at.
So you want to extend and extend it three times? I just don't know how, is that...
Good luck with that motion.
Yeah.
Do that.
No.
I just, I think it might get...
Get messy?
Messy, yeah. I just think that, so from my perspective, like, I think extending to, to 10, 5, 23 is fair. Based on the calendar she's given us, it's achievable. It's an extra year, right? It's an extra year.
10 months, right?
No, expired 21 or 22?
So it was a, it was a, it was an agreement entered into October 5th, 2020, and had a one-year...
Okay.
...deal to it, unless otherwise extended by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Right? And the, you've arguably implicitly extended in the various meetings and lack of any action.
Yes.
And here we are now memorializing the extension through a date that we're talking about.
Yeah.
So, so I think that extension is a two-year extension, basically.
Okay.
Why not?
So I will make a motion to extend the lifted luxury timeframe to October 5th, 2023. And the activity that we are looking for to enforce is final Cannabis Control Committee licensing, which needs to be completed for cultivation, manufacturing, and retail by October 5th, 2023. Otherwise, the agreement terms will prevail. Looking for a second.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Andrew. He beat you.
I didn't think Andrew was going to second you.
I didn't either. Peter, do I do okay with that?
I think you're good.
Okay.
And, uh, yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. All right.
That's great.
I think Andrew appreciates the effort we make to...
Yep.
...come to an even keel.
I don't want to be that much of a sore thumb.
You're not a sore thumb at all. Okay. So moving on through the agenda, I see nothing for departments, Andrew, I mean, for...
Peter.
Peter, whoever you are. It's like my calling my kids.
Nope, nothing.
Okay.
We'll have Highway at the 23rd.
Oh, yay, great.
Brian, he couldn't make it tonight, he's out of town.
Okay.
That's why he's not on the list of the agenda.
Bless you.
Um, public forum? Think we're good? Any announcements, Peter?
No.
Okay. Correspondence? I know someone came in.
I'm just going to hand out, uh, some correspondence that came in today. One is, uh, um, and so Jen, I already gave you yours.
Yeah.
If you could just hand those to, for sure. One is a, a, a letter...
Thank you.
Uh, from Cox Communications. They provide cable service to folks on Harkness Road. And so the letter says, "We Cox Communications will continue to provide cable services to Harkness Road because Charter Communications cannot. And unless and until Charter can, will continue to do that unless you, the Board of Selectmen, object." So I presume you wouldn't object to that.
No.
Okay, so that's information. And then also in your packet is a letter that I got today. I mean, it was sent earlier, apparently. Just from the, you know, the Chair of the Council on Aging, a copy of a letter to Mo Theryan, who's the gentleman in the firm that put up the carport over at the senior center and then came back and put up some walls to keep the snow out and also to help ensure people don't trip and fall getting in and out, or the driver getting in and out. So it was just a congratulatory letter to Mo in appreciation. So that's just correspondence that came in for you.
Great. Okay. And then the meeting minutes? I didn't see anything but Andrew and Richard. I saw, one of you found something. I don't remember who it was.
I had noticed, but I wasn't sure when Richard mentioned it, so we kind of confirmed it with each other, I guess.
Okay.
But the...
Last page.
Yeah, so the last page, there's the two motions, just has Richard making the motion. I'm seconding it.
I, under both, on minutes and then adjourned, right?
Yeah. And under, I'm pretty sure we...
It's flipped.
Flipped, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So we can be...
So we'll double-check that, so don't sign...
Okay.
Till we get that correct.
All right.
Yep.
Selectmen reports, Richard?
Nothing exciting as of right now.
Andrew?
Nope.
Yeah, I don't have anything either. Town administrator report, Peter?
No, just updates, uh, you know, continue to play with the water. We submitted, uh, you know, some documents to Mass DEP, and so far they like them in terms of what the game plan is. It's all, all subject to financial resources and so forth, so that, that, just reporting on that. Uh, also, as you know, MECC, MetaComet, uh, continue to go to their meetings as a, as a member of the Board of Directors. And they are challenged with their staffing. We keep struggling with that, so we'll see where we get to on that. But I hear less and less, um, issues from our two chiefs here in terms of interactions with MetaComet, so that's a good thing.
Great.
Do we know if, uh, the elementary school wrapped up their heating project?
No, but the burden or the monkey is on the back of the school, uh, folks on that one. Do they have someone certified as you, yet?
Being a pain in the butt.
I can't say that, and I'm...
Well, I wasn't going to add.
Well, and, and that's a bit of a, you know, I don't want to poke the, the hornet's nest too much on that one.
But we assume that was a lot.
But the monkeys, the ball's in their court on that, yes.
We, we assume the whole thing's been repaired and they're operating or doing something.
Yeah, no, I don't know that yet.
Yeah.
But I meet with Jason on the 13th, next, uh, in two weeks. Go over the budget and catch up.
Okay.